This conference will now be recorded.
April 11. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the United Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody. It's Tuesday, November 12th, 2024, where our weekly supervisor meeting at courthouse, they will go on a go-to meeting also and recorder for future records. We have an agenda in front of us, a motion approved agenda.
Second.
Motion is our second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve the minutes for their November 4th meeting. Motion to approve November 4th?
Move to approve.
The motion is our second.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion?
No call Jim.
Aye.
Sidney. Aye. Mike.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye. County attorneys not here, sheriff.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So I have October fees for you this morning in the amount of $6,822.69. Apparently there was a delay, you guys getting a copy of the report, but that's what the fees that we collected in October are.
Do we have a motion to approve that sheriff's report?
Oh.
Second? Our second. Any other discussion?
No call. Mark.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Sidney. Aye. Jim.
Aye.
Todd.
Anything else?
No, not exciting, and not no good news, but one deputy said a deer, minor damage, however, might be repaired, so you'll see that bill come at some point. Truck's on the road, it broke the grill and the front bumper, so. Nothing's minor, but it is what it is. Yeah, and the vehicle's still in use, so anyway, at some point they'll come across.
Other than that, you have questions for me?
I have one, because I just happened to notice that maybe it's been there for the K-9 or something, but was the back window out on one of the Tahos?
No.
Looked like there was a hanging over the back window, and I thought, wow, maybe that was the K-9 and.
Well, the K-9 is in a Tahoe, but there was no broken windows or anything like that, so I'm really not sure.
Just the other day I was behind it, he was turning to go to the sheriff's office, and I thought that back window looked kind of funny. When he said deer, I thought, wow, maybe he slammed into the side, but that was.
Yeah, no, uh-uh. I'm not sure, Todd.
Okay.
What do you thought that day, but they're all in good shape.
Okay, good, thank you.
You bet. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Department head discussion.
I just want to mention, Mitchell County Home Health and Public Health is having an open house next Thursday. You guys are all invited and anybody else listening to celebrate our 55 years of service and National Home Care Month, so we'll have some goodies and have information about the services we provide, so we invite everybody to come.
What day is that?
Next Thursday, the 21st, for One Degree. Yep.
Very good. Any other department head? Discussion of possible action on ARPA application?
So I'm here to discuss the ARPA application. I submitted you all the application along with two quotes. I kind of already mentioned this for windows that open in our building. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Did you decide to go with more than two windows in?
I did. Well, I kind of did it for the all nine to see what it was, and actually came in way under than what I thought it was going to be.
Is that just the west end of the building then, or is there something?
Yeah, just where we are, so I guess that's up to you if you guys wanted to do the whole building, but I got a quote for the side that we're on.
I reached out to that guy and he hasn't, I got it yesterday, and he said he's waiting for his manufacturer to get back to him, and apparently he hasn't gotten back, so.
Okay, yeah, because I'd never heard anything from him.
Waiting another week, or what did you like to do, I guess?
That's up to you guys.
So what did you do, or what did you look into, or what was? The guy who put up our building over here, reached out to him, and he said he just put in 200 windows in an apartment complex in Rochester, so he's. But he's trying a different manufacturer, a different person to get ahold of for different numbers, and he hasn't gotten back to me yesterday, so. He'll possibly wait a week, I'm sure he had his numbers in. What kind of windows are they, may I ask? Said I gave him the contact for more, and he hasn't gotten back, but. What would you like to do?
It's up to you guys, you know, it depends on what, if you guys want a specific window in there. The first company I talked to, the lower bid, they had just put in some windows in a school not far from here, showed me pictures of it, they looked like great windows, and they can actually match the color of the windows that are already in as far as the outside border, so you wouldn't see a difference. The other company, it sounds like it's the manufacturer that they go through is, it's going to be a little different, it's going to be pretty close, from what I hear, not even going to notice it, but that lower bid, I definitely got, I thought it was, after talking to them, it's more the double hinge and the triple glass, I don't know much about windows, but that first bid we got, I thought, I got a good feeling from them. But, you know, if we want to wait and talk to that other person too, that's up to you guys. I don't know what kind of windows they would be looking at.
When would the other bids go void?
I'd see that one as a 30-day. I don't see anything on this first one, how long it's good for.
What style do you put in, double hung or basement?
The double hung, the second bid, they quoted both.
Second one is single hung, that single hung or basement, where these are, the first one is double hung.
Oh, yeah, the double hung, yeah, I think would probably be best. Security-wise, I don't know which one would be best, it sounds like they're all pretty secure.
Well, single hung, hung the top moves, double hung the bottom.
The top moves too.
You could dip them in.
It looks like that first one is the double hung.
Did the load quote give you an indication when they would be able to do it?
No, I'm not. Does it have to be done by the end of this year, or just approved?
End of '26.
Okay, okay. They have not said when they, I suppose it'll depend on weather, maybe, but I could find that out. If you guys approve it, I can definitely get that answer right away.
I guess I'm, if you're happy with the double hung, with that first quote, if we want to wait a week too, I'm good with that also, doesn't matter. These people are local, and fairly local, they seem to have a pretty decent itemized quote for what they're going to do, but.
Yeah, I actually did reach out to the local window company here in Mitchell County, and they referred them to that second quote, because they do more residential windows rather than for commercial, so I did try to stay local, local, but that option wasn't there.
So the second quote was more residential windows?
No, the, I reached out to the local company here in town, and they referred me to that one that did the second quote, because the one here in Mitchell County does residential, not commercial, this is commercial, both of them are commercial.
Okay.
Yep.
Is there girls wanted? I'm ready to move, aye, okay. Make a motion.
This is for Window World?
That first one?
For like 11, no.
Yep.
And first one was for $11,131.
And that is all nine windows?
I will approve Window World quote for $11,131. The motion is our second. Our second. Second, any other discussion?
No call, Todd.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye. Very good.
Thank you guys very much. I know the staff will be very excited.
All right, approved liquor license for Sportsman's Inn and Grill LLC. Application for liquor license for Sportsman's out here on east end of town. They've all got all their stuff, insurance. Have a motion to approve liquor license? I'm going to make that motion. Their motion is our second. Our second. Any other discussion?
No call, Todd.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Sidney. Aye. Mike.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye. Very good. Approved fiscal year 24 annual urban renewal report.
I sent a copy to you guys, the gist of it, we had beginning balance of $369,756 in our TIF fund, total revenue was $4,957,933. Total expenditures were $4,620,815. For an ending fund balance of $706,874. TIF debt outstanding at the beginning of the year was $21,268,628. And at the end of the year, it was $15,094939.
Did you email that, Rachel, or I must have missed it, I didn't see it, so.
I don't know.
Pardon me?
I thought I did.
You may have, but I, sometimes I miss that, but.
Yep.
But it came in an email?
Yeah.
I'll look then, okay.
Otherwise, if not, you send it to me.
You could send it again, just so I don't have it, so. You say the total TIF was $21 million, is that right?
At the beginning of the year was $21,268,628, and at the end of the fiscal year was $15,094939.
Is the balance, balance, is around 52% of that, I remember right, something like that?
I don't know that exactly.
Okay, so it's not, we had an agreement with them, where we did the bonding, and they're paying the loan on that, so.
Yeah, so they pay the difference in a special assessment, and they're expected to revenue and the bonding.
You have a motion to approve the fiscal year 24 annual urban renewal report?
Move to approve.
Motion is our second.
Second.
Any other discussion?
No call, Sidney. Aye. Mark.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye. Board of adjustment member appointment?
Hi.
Good morning.
As of 11/1 of this year, I had one of my board of adjustment members' terms come to an end, so I have reached out to them to see if they wanted to be reappointed, and they do, it would be G. Daly, so I would just need a motion and a second to reappoint her to the board. It's a five-year term, so her next term would end on 11/1 of 2029.
Give me a motion to approve Mrs. Daly. Board of adjustment member?
Second.
Is our second?
Our second.
Second. Any other discussion?
No call, Jim.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Todd.
You know what, can we go, can we halt right there? I just got thinking, I better ask. She's actually my aunt. Is it a paid or any, I mean, is it anything that I should have stayed from?
She's not, is she going to find, benefit financially from, from this position?
She just gets. They only get paid mileage. Mileage.
So.
So it's not like they're getting paid per meeting, or she's getting like a certain allowance per year or anything.
Yeah, it's not.
So it's just mileage.
I think you'll be fine. Okay, aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Sidney. Aye. Thank you.
Group recorders monthly report for October? We have an October monthly report, $6,885.92. I move to approve. The motion is our second.
Our second.
Any other discussion?
No call, Jim.
Aye.
Sidney. Aye. Mike.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Todd. Aye.
Resolution authorizing $2,430,000 for urban renewal tax increment revenue bonds, serious 24A pledging to the payment of funds and portions of taxes created through authority of subsection 2, section 403, 19.
And it will be resolution 12-50.
1250?
Yep.
Heidi is online, so. Is there Heidi?
I am, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep.
Great, you've received your resolution from Dorsey and Whitney, which authorizes and puts into legal form the financing for the urban renewal projects as TIF funds, so these are not backed by the general obligation, they are backed solely by the tax increment revenues of the wind farms, fairly short-term, we're looking at a bond yield of 4.935. These will be placed with St. Ansgar Bank, keeping the banks locally, and with this resolution today, you'll lock in that interest rate and have a clear to close of 11/26, so this will be certified as TIF debt for your fiscal year 25/26.
Heidi says on here, we're going to create a reserve fund, is that something that we're going to do today, or can we put it on the agenda for next week, or how does that work?
That reserve fund can be made at the, at the time of closing, or right after closing of the funds, and that can come from the TIF fund.
Okay, not from this bond, but from the TIF funded, the other, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, so revenue that is in the TIF fund already can be used with a reserve fund, but not from this bond that we're doing now, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. We have a motion to authorize resolution 1250. Move to approve resolution 1250-24. The motion is our second. Our second. Any other discussion?
No call, Todd.
Aye.
Mark.
No.
Mike.
No.
Sidney. Aye. Jim.
Aye. Motion passes. Anything else for us, Heidi?
Thank you, everyone. We'll be in touch here as the documents will be, you know, moving forward, and congratulations on a successful financing.
Thank you very much for everything involved. Thank you. Our next one, 10:30, is Althe Bridge?
Yeah, you can go in there.
There. I guess we'll go to items of note, meetings attended. I had an Osage City Council meeting, I didn't bring the agenda, which I have my notes on usually. Landscapes partners with their discussed things for the city in regards to what they do with their urban renewal. I guess I'll leave it at that. I'm done.
I had a landfill meeting, and I also forgot my stuff. It was a very good meeting, I know that.
I had number meetings.
I had none. I had a fair board meeting, went through the committees, that was pretty brief at this time. We, it's a 16-member board, and they've been with 15, as long as I can remember, and so they, actually, somebody approached, and so we heard to get people to have on these boards. Anyway, they introduced a gentleman last night, Ross Gerard. A bunch of the members went over to November 2nd to the Rice rodeo finals in Mason City. That's the rodeo that was in Osage that is coming back next, next year, and they don't know why, but for some reason, they had on, I think they have three shoots, the one shoot had Mitchell County Fair on it, and like, that, they, the Bull Riders came out of that like, two or three more times than the other two shoots that had the other advertisement on it, and so it was, and each time the announcer would say, coming out a shoot number sponsored by the Mitchell County Fair, which they did not sponsor anything, they just had that. They said it was pretty neat to hear Mitchell County Fair so many times, so that was pretty interesting. Now, they had the 4H Award Night, November 10th, there'll be, a bunch of them will be going down to the Iowa Annual Fair Convention, December 13th through the 15th, that'll be where they sit down with like the carnival crews and other vendors that go down there and talk to them. Lot of food stands, again, wanting to come back next year. Then we have, after that, we had the annual meeting where terms are up and reelections, and so they elect, they all stayed the same. I think they can have, I think it's three terms, Carl Fox President, Chad Halbach Vice President, Adam Norby Second Vice, and Roger Barker Treasurer, so that was, that was the end of it.
Mineral management plan update?
We have two, one for Lewis, one Chester Site, 5292 Garden Avenue, Line Springs, and Old Jostation Site, 3538, Denver Avenue, Osage.
All right. Public comments, any public comments?
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for doing your jobs. Penny Morse, I came, I know several of you were at the, my, the Board of Adjustment meeting with the total for the Bitcoin mine. This is just sort of a follow-up, my understanding from the meeting is that there would be a, it would, a noise ordinance in place, the minutes were a little, that I read, were a little less clear on that, but I thought that that was what the Board of Adjustment wanted, and I thought, if there's going to be any kind of a noise ordinance, it really needs the Board of Adjustment to do it, that maybe you guys should start looking at noise ordinances for the county. I mean, I did a little exploring around, and there's all kinds of noise ordinances, it looks like something that should take a lot of careful thought, because you don't, you don't want unanticipated consequences by not crafting it right. I just would encourage the board to start considering that, and not wait for the Board of Adjustment to do it, because they, you know, I don't know, might never meet again, and I know the young man who wants to get this going, I read in News File Corporation article that they're, they've got a letter of intent signed with Spirit 3D Corporation to acquire a 12.5 megawatt site in Iowa, featuring, you know, whatever, has all the, with the, they, they, these are particular things, but that they want to get this going by December, because he's got a letter of intent signed with the 3D Corporation, simple mining does, so I, I know he wants to just kind of get going with it. And the other thing I read in the minutes was that, and I don't remember this being said at the meeting, those, those of you who were there, that, that, that simple mining is going to pay for an environmental impact study, and I, that little red flag went up, I mean, I sort of thought, that should be something, there's going to be an environmental impact study, the county should have some kind of impact on who's going to do it, because we all know when there's a vested interest, those, those things can tend to be done quickly and to the advantage of whoever's paying for it, and it should be, be an independent environmental impact study if that's going to be done. I think it's, you know, before we rush forward with something like, you know, opening up a Bitcoin mining operation, we need to look at the other communities that have it, I plan on making some trips to where they're, they exist in Iowa, and just find out for myself as a member of the community to, you know, what kind of an impact do they have, and if people have a lot of concerns, I think those concerns should be addressed before we rush to approve, and I understand why he wants to do it where he wants to do it, because it's right next to a substation that has the power to do it, not every place has that, so I understand why he wants to do it there, I admire his entrepreneurial experience, you know, energy, but, you know, I think in the rush to create something, I think you have to look at all, you know, all the impacts, that, that would just be my, my concerns that I would like you guys to consider, and like, maybe start considering looking into noise ordinances, instead of, like I said, I, there's a lot of noise ordinances, and it seems to me you want to make sure it doesn't have a, you know, something gets thrown together just for that, and then it has a negative consequence somewhere else, so if something like that's done, you want to make sure.
Can I speak on the noise ordinance?
Yeah.
Oh, you could do one in rural Mitchell County, I mean, if you did, my neighbor won't be able to run this dryer bin.
That's, that's.
Neighbor across the mile won't be able to.
That's exactly.
I can hear the.
I mean, but, but there's things about 24/7, and you know, that's why, if you're, if you're, if some, you guys would probably want to start looking into, that's the unintended consequences I was talking about, you want to craft one, so it doesn't have unintended consequences, but.
That's.
A dryer bin runs in your neighbor's thing, it doesn't run 24/7, 365 days a year.
No, it'll run for a couple months, and sometimes they have the cooling vent run up there.
So anyway.
They don't shut them on, you know.
I, I'm just saying, you know, that's, that was something that, you know, they said, that's why I thought, you should start looking into it, and if you have, because I looked, well, they're all over the place, and something is crafted, you want to be careful of unintended consequences, just like what you're talking about.
Correct.
I mean, that's.
I mean, his noise is probably less than what.
Right.
The other noises are, so.
Yeah, I know, so that, that's why, you know, it's, to me, it's, if you're going to do it, it wouldn't be done by December, because you really love, if something, you want to be careful. because you really love, if something, you want to be careful that something isn't written that has unintended consequence like that.
Yeah. I don't know how you could do it without.
Well, that's why you got to look at, they've been written in other places, how are they crafted them? And, you know, that, that would take some research. That's what I decided. I mean, this would take research to, to write a, a noise ordinance that doesn't have unintended consequences and isn't, that does what you want it to do. And I just thought you shouldn't wait for the Board of Adjustment, which I don't, they don't really have, you know, Amanda's going to be leaving soon and maybe it's something that the supervisor should sort of pick up and start looking into and see, is that possible to do one? And have other places that have passed one, what have been the unintended consequences? Is there a way of crafting one that's, that's, would do what you want it to do without having unintended consequences? And I don't really have an answer to that.
Yeah.
But other communities that are dealing with this, you might want to look at what have they done and that's all. I just was encouraging you guys to maybe pick, pick that up a little bit because it seems to me the Board of Adjustment is a little bit bigger what they can, they can do.
Yeah.
And you know, there are a lot of people there that are really upset. So you want to make sure you're looking at everything, you don't just rush to a decision one way or the other, but you, that you really carefully look at it.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
We do ballot, though?
And we will canvass the votes from November 5th, 2024, Mitchell County General Election.
We're trying to do that.
Are we moving?
Yeah, I need to sit through this. I'll get comfortable.
Need to sit, oh.
Blue, no. As long as there's one blue on there. No, it will be a little white one. All right. Didn't attempt to keep them put together. This first time. All right.
So I have to make one for you.
You don't bite, yeah.
I'll jump this one. You might go on and then. Okay. So I think at least for the.
You can say, you can say. This is totally fine.
This is all for me, if you can say.
Yes, you guys have it. I'll start by, for like presidential, I'll read the person and then I'll do precinct one, ED means Election Day, and then absentee is the absentee. All right. So President, Vice President, Donald J. Trump. You are not that easy. No, those ones are just.
Okay, just a second stack right here?
Yep.
Everything, okay.
And then those will go, that will be a clip and then I'll have to start with second.
Do I need to do it while you're talking or can I just?
You can keep going. So first one, President, Vice President, Donald J. Trump and JD Vance, Republican. Precinct one, election, or ED 186, absentee 105. Precinct two, ED 150, absentee 109. Precinct three, Election Day 141, absentee 116. Precinct four, Election Day 164, absentee 124. Precinct five, ED 183, absentee 98. Precinct six, ED 294, absentee 86. Precinct seven, ED 303, absentee 83. Precinct eight, ED 319, absentee 102. Precinct nine, ED 407, absentee 184. Precinct 10, ED 162, absentee 93. Precinct 11, ED 73, absentee 84. Precinct 12, ED 70, absentee 56. For a total of 3,736. Kamala D. Harris and Tim Walz, Democratic Party. Precinct one, Election Day 80, absentee 99. Precinct two, ED 77, absentee 95. Precinct three, 67, absentee 112. Precinct four, ED 97, absentee 139. Precinct five, ED 65, absentee 53. Precinct six, ED 96, absentee 63. Precinct seven, ED 105. Absentee 61, precinct eight, 98. Absentee 90, precinct nine, ED 158, absentee 145. Precinct 10, ED 62, absentee 52. Precinct 11, ED 20, absentee 62. Precinct 12, ED 12, absentee 35, for a total of 1,943. Chase Oliver and Mike Drummond, Libertarian. Precinct one, three, absentee, or I'm sorry, precinct one, Election Day three, absentee one. Precinct two, Election Day two, absentee one. Precinct three, one, zero, absentee. That's a whole new study I did. Precinct four, Election Day zero, absentee one. Precinct five, Election Day three, absentee zero. Precinct six, Election Day two, absentee zero. Precinct seven, Election Day one, absentee zero. Precinct eight, Election Day three, absentee one. Precinct nine, ED three, absentee zero. Precinct 10, both zero. Precinct 11, Election Day one, absentee zero. Precinct 12, zero, Election Day absentee one, for a total of 24. Claudia De La Cruz and Karina Garcia, Election Day, precinct one, Election Day zero. I might skip ahead. Precinct two, there is one absentee. Precinct seven, there was one, Election Day. Precinct nine, one absentee. Oh, I was reading, let me correct that. Sorry, I was reading William Stodden, Miss Calum. Claudia De La Cruz and Karina Garcia had one vote and that was absentee in precinct nine for a total of one vote. William P. Stodden and Stephanie H. Kalinsky, SOC Party, had one vote absentee in precinct two. One vote precinct seven on Election Day for a total of two votes. Robert F. Kennedy Jr. and Nicole Shanahan, WTP Party. Precinct one, seven, Election Day two, absentee. Precinct two, one Election Day. Precinct three, two absentee. Precinct four, five, Election Day, three absentee. Precinct five, one Election Day. Precinct six, two Election Day, two absentee. Precinct seven, five, Election Day. Precinct eight, six, Election Day, three absentee. Precinct nine, four, Election Day, two absentee. Precinct 10, four, Election Day, one absentee. For a total of 50 votes. Shiva Adhary and Crystal Ellis received one vote from precinct one on Election Day. Write-ins, there was one on Election Day in precinct two. There was one on Election Day, or one absentee for precinct three. Precinct four had three on Election Day. Precinct five had one on Election Day. Precinct six had one absentee. Precinct seven had two, Election Day, one absentee. Precinct nine had two on Election Day. Precinct 10, two on Election Day, for a total of 14. And there was a total of 21 undervotes and four overvotes. All right. So we have United States Representative, District Two, Ashley Hinson, Republic Party. Precinct one, ED 198, absentee 117. Precinct two, 148, ED 110, absentee. Precinct three, 148, Election Day, 173, absentee. Precinct four, 180, Election Day 137, absentee. Precinct five, 186, Election Day, 102, absentee. Precinct six, 297, Election Days, 86, absentee. Precinct seven, 306, Election Day, 85, absentee. Precinct eight, Election Day 334, absentee 113. Precinct nine, 444, Election Day, 198, absentee. Precinct 10, 180, Election Day, absentee 96. Precinct 11, Election Day 76, absentee 89. Precinct 12, Election Day 73, absentee 54, for a total of 3,930 votes. Sarah Corcoran, Democratic Party. Precinct one, Election Day 73, absentee 85. Precinct two, Election Day 64, absentee 84. Precinct three, Election Day 55, absentee 88. Precinct four, Election Day 80, absentee 111. Precinct five, Election Day 55, absentee 46. Precinct six, Election Day 83, absentee 54. Precinct seven, Election Day 97, absentee 51. Precinct eight, Election Day 81, absentee 79. Precinct nine, Election Day 110, absentee 122. Precinct 10, Election Day 44, absentee 46. Precinct 11, Election Day 13, absentee 54. Precinct 12, Election Day 8, absentee 33, for a total of 1,616 votes. Jody Madeline Puffett, precinct one, Election Day four, absentee one. Precinct two, eight, absentee four. Precinct three, three, absentee two. Precinct four, Election Day two, absentee four. Precinct five, Election Day three. Precinct six, Election Day four, absentee two. Precinct seven, five. Precinct eight, Election Day one, absentee one. Precinct nine, Election Day five, absentee four. Precinct 10, no votes. Precinct 11, one Election Day. Precinct 12, no votes, for a total of 60 votes. There was one write-in in precinct two on Election Day. There was one write-in precinct seven, Election Day, and one absentee. Precinct nine, there was one on Election Day. For a total of four write-ins. There were 179 undervotes and seven overvotes. State Senator, District 30. Doug Campbell, Republican Party. Precinct one, ED 202, absentee 111. Precinct two, Election Day 148, absentee 105. Precinct three, Election Day 148, absentee 161. Precinct four, Election Day 183, absentee 130. Precinct five, Election Day 184, absentee 101. Precinct six, Election Day 288, absentee 84. Precinct seven, Election Day 312, absentee 84. Precinct eight, Election Day 325, absentee 108. Precinct nine, 421, Election Day 186, absentee. Precinct 10, Election Day 172, absentee 89. Precinct 11, Election Day 79, absentee 81. Precinct 12, Election Day 70, absentee 54, for a total of 3,826. Richard Lawrence, Democratic Party. Precinct one, Election Day 71, absentee 91. Precinct two, Election Day 73, absentee 91. Precinct three, Election Day 53, absentee 93. Precinct four, Election Day 79, absentee 119. Precinct five, Election Day 57, absentee 48. Precinct six, Election Day 91, absentee 57. Precinct seven, 89, Election Day 52, absentee. Precinct eight, Election Day 93, absentee 83. Precinct nine, Election Day 129, absentee 132. Precinct 10, Election Day 50, absentee 50. Precinct 11, Election Day 13, absentee 59. Precinct 12, Election Day 11, absentee 35, for a total of 1,719 votes. There was one write-in in precinct two on Election Day and one on absentee. Precinct five, Election Day had one. Precinct seven, absentee had one. Precinct eight, Election Day had one. Precinct nine, Election Day had four, for a total of nine write-ins. There were 241 undervotes and one overvote. Three or system, four or system? All right. State Representative, District 60, Jane Eve Bloomingdale, Republican. Precinct one, 247 votes, Election Day 165, absentee. Precinct two, Election Day 194, absentee 158. Precinct three, Election Day 185, absentee 203. Precinct four, Election Day 232, absentee 198. Precinct five, Election Day 217, absentee 133. Precinct six, Election Day 347, absentee 112. Precinct seven, Election Day 372, absentee 109. Precinct eight, Election Day 374, absentee 154. Precinct nine, Election Day 520, absentee 252. Precinct 10, Election Day 208, absentee 119. Precinct 11, Election Day 88, absentee 119. Precinct 12, Election Day 78, absentee 72, for a total of 4,856. There were four write-ins on precinct one, absentee. Three write-ins, Election Day precinct two, one, on Election Day one, absentee. Precinct three, one on Election Day, one absentee. Precinct four, three on Election Day, two absentee. Precinct five, Election Day one. Precinct six, Election Day four, and four absentee. Precinct seven, Election Day one, absentee three. Election, precinct eight, Election Day seven, absentee six. Precinct nine, five on Election Day, one absentee. Precinct six, one absentee. Prec, did I say precinct six? Precinct 10 had one absentee. Precinct 11, none, and precinct 12, none, for a total of 48 write-ins. There were 892 undervotes and zero overvotes. All right. Supreme Court Justice, date of May. So it's yes and no. Precinct one, Election Day 192, yes, 49, no. Absentee 118, yes, 51, no. Precinct two, Election Day 129, yes, 57, no. Absentee 108, yes, 49, no. Precinct three, Election Day 145, yes, 33, no's. Absentee 160, yes, 46, no's. Precinct four, Election Day 171, yes, 58, no's. Absentee 142, 56, no's. Precinct five, Election Day 149, yes, 47, no. Absentee 94, yes, 29, no. Precinct six, Election Day 249, yes, 67, no. Absentee 79, yes, 33, no. Precinct seven, Election Day 303, yes, 53, no. Absentee 89, yes, 25, no. Precinct eight, Election Day 284, yes, 85, no's. Absentee 114, yes, 42, no. Precinct nine, Election Day 407, yes, 91, no. Absentee 213, yes, 49, no. Precinct 10, Election Day 51, yes, 43, no. Absentee 87, yes, 32, no. Precinct 11, 52, yes, 16, no. Absentee 83, yes, 41, no. Precinct 12, Election Day 55, yes, 12, no's. Absentee 57, yes, 15, no. For a total of 3,641, yes, 1,079, no's. 1,073 undervotes and three overvotes. Court of Appeals Judge Mary Elizabeth Chichelli. Precinct one, Election Day 187, yes, 46, no. Absentee 137, yes, 30, no. Precinct two, Election Day 133, yes, 47, no. Absentee 111, yes, 41, no. Precinct three, Election Day 138, yes, 33, no. Absentee 156, yes, 44, no. Precinct four, Election Day 169, yes, 49, no. Absentee 143, yes, 45, no. Precinct five, Election Day 136, yes, 53, no. Absentee 91, yes, 28, no. Precinct six, Election Day 242, yes, 77, no. Absentee 78, yes, 31, no. Precinct seven, Election Day 284, yes, 61, no. Absentee 91, yes, 21, no. Precinct eight, Election Day 260, yes, 100, no. Absentee 111, yes, 40, no. Precinct nine, Election Day 396, yes, 96, no. 209, absentee 209, yes, 46, no. Precinct 10, Election Day 151, yes, 42, no. Absentee 92, yes, 24, no. Precinct 11, Election Day 55, yes, 11, no. Absentee 93, 28, 20, oh my gosh, 20, oh my gosh. Oh my gosh. 93, yes, 28, no. I'm reading too fast. Um, Precinct 12, Election Day 52, yes. 14, no. Absentee 59, yes, 10, no's. For a total of 3,571, yes. 1,017, no. 1,208 undervotes, 0 overvotes.
Only- Only 2 numbers.
I know. There's a lot. And I started out right?
Nope.
All right. We've got a lot more to go. Um, Court of Appeals Judge Samuel Langholtz. Precinct 1, Election Day 179, yes, 50, no's. Absentee 126, yes, 34, no's. Precinct 2, Election Day 126, yes, 52, no's. Absentee 105, yes, 45, no. Precinct 3, Election Day 131, yes, 39, no's. Absentee 150, yes, 49, no's. Precinct 4, Election Day 167, yes, 54, no's. Absentee 134, yes, 51, no's. Precinct 5, Election Day 133, yes, 55, no. Absentee 86, yes, 32, no's. Precinct 6, Election Day 243, yes, 73, no. Absentee 79, yes, 27, no's. Precinct 7, Election Day 280, yes, 54, no. Absentee 85, yes, 23, no. Precinct 8, Election Day 260, yes, 87, no's. Absentee 108, yes, 40, no's. Precinct 9, Election Day 374, yes, 95, no. Absentee 198, yes, 51, no. Um, Precinct 10, Election Day 135, yes, 44, no's. Absentee 87, yes, 26, no's. Precinct 11, Election Day 49, yes, 14, no's. Absentee 79, yes, 41, no's. Precinct 12, Election Day 50, yes, 11, no's. Absentee 48, yes, 11, no's. For a total of 3,412, yes. 1,058, no's. 1,322 undervotes and 4 overvotes. Uh, Court of Appeals Judge Mary Ellen Tabor. Precinct 1, Election Day, yes, 189, no, 43. Absentee 125, yes, 34, no. Precinct 2, Election Day 132, yes, 47, no. Absentee 105, yes, 46, no. Precinct 3, Election Day 137, yes, 32, no. Absentee 165, yes, 34, no. Precinct 4, Election Day 173, yes, 46, no. Absentee 150, yes, 40, no. Precinct 5, Election Day 139, yes, 50, no. Absentee 86, yes, 36, no. Precinct 6, Election Day 243, yes, 76, no. Absentee 75, yes, 32, no. Precinct 7, Election Day 263, yes, 71, no. Absentee 89, yes, 19, no. Precinct 8, Election Day 252, yes, 93, no. Absentee 110, yes, 39, no. Precinct 9, Election Day 371, yes, 98, no. Absentee 195, yes, 49, no. Precinct 10, Election Day 134, yes, 44, no. Absentee 87, yes, 27, no. Precinct 11, Election Day 54, yes, 11, no. Absentee 90, yes, 30, no. Precinct 12, Election Day 47, yes. Uh, 14, no. Absentee 55, yes, 6, no. For a total of 3,466, yes. 1,017, no's. 1,312 undervotes and 1 overvote. Court of Appeals Judge Tyler J. Buller. Precinct 1, Election Day 198, yes, no, 38. Absentee 140, yes, 25, no. Precinct 2, Election Day 131, yes, no, 50. Absentee 112, yes, 39, no. Precinct 3, Election Day 143, yes, 31, no. Absentee 155, 43, no. Precinct 4, Election Day 175, yes, 48, no. Absentee 146, yes, 44, no. Precinct 5, Election Day 139, yes, 46, no. Absentee 85, yes, 31, no. Precinct 6, Election Day 255, yes, 61, no. Absentee 77, yes, 31, no. Precinct 7, Election Day 260, yes, 65, no. Absentee 83, yes, 23, no. Precinct 8, Election Day 246, yes, 89, no. Absentee 112, yes, 34, no. Precinct 9, Election Day 373, yes, 91, no. Absentee 194, yes, 47, no. Precinct 10, Election Day 129, yes, 47, no. Absentee 85, yes, 25, no. Precinct 11, Election Day 55, yes, 10, no's. Absentee 94, yes, 29, no's. Precinct 12, Election Day 48, yes. Um, 13, no's. Absentee 50, yes, 9, no's. For a total of 3,484, yeses. 969, no's. 1,342 undervotes and 1 overvote. Um, District 2A Judge Ruston Davenport. Precinct 1, Election Day 193, yes, 43, no's. Absentee 131, yes, 35, no. Precinct 2, Election Day 130, yes, 49, no. Absentee 113, yes, 36, no. Precinct 3, Election Day 137, yes, 39, no. Absentee 148, yes, 48, no. Precinct 4, Election Day 173, yes, 53, no. Absentee 139, yes, 52, no. Precinct 5, Election Day 133, yes, 49, no. Absentee 85, yes, 30, no. Precinct- Precinct 6, Election Day 252, yes, 59, no. Absentee 73, yes, 33, no. Precinct 7, Election Day 267, yes, 65, no. Absentee 85, yes, 22, no. Precinct 8, Election Day 249, yes, 95, no. Absentee 111, yes, 36, no. Precinct 9, Election Day 372, yes. Uh, 97, no. Absentee 185, yes, 52, no. Precinct 10, Election Day 139, yes, 39, no. Absentee 87, yes, 25, no. Precinct 11, Election Day 51, yes, 14, no. Absentee 90, yes, 32, no. Precinct 12, Election Day 49, yes, 12, no. Absentee 49, yes. Absentee 10, no. Um, for a total of 3,441, yes. 1,025, no. 1,328 undervotes and 2 overvotes. District 2A Judge Blake H. Norman. Precinct 1, Election Day 188, yes, 39, no. Absentee 128, yes, 30, no. Precinct 2, Election Day 138, yes, 46, no. Absentee 109, yes, 37, no. Precinct 3, Election Day 139, yes, 34, no. Absentee 151, yes, 40, no. Precinct 4, Election Day 174, yes, 47, no. Absentee 139, yes, 45, no. Precinct 5, Election Day 133, yes, 49, no. Absentee 86, yes, 30, no. Precinct 6, Election Day 256, yes, 54, no. Absentee 79, yes, 25, no. Precinct 7, Election Day 271, yes, 57, no. Absentee 84, yes, 21, no. Precinct 8, Election Day 264, yes, 76, no. Absentee 112, yes, 34, no. Precinct 9, Election Day 374, yes, 84, no. Absentee 187, yes, 41, no. Precinct 11, Election Day 139, yes, 38, no. Absentee 87, yes, 22, no. Precinct 11, Election Day 50, yes, 11, no. Absentee 90, yes, 32, no. Precinct 12, Election Day 50, yes, 9, no. Absentee 54, yes, 6, no. For a total of 3,489, yeses, 907, no's. 1,399 undervotes and 1 overvote. Last judge. District 2A Associate Judge Elizabeth Beatty. Precinct 1, Election Day 198, yes, 36, no. Absentee 137, yes, 27, no. Precinct 2, Election Day 138, yes, 44, no. Absentee 106, yes, 44, no. Precinct 3, Election Day 140, yes, 32, no. Absentee 160, yes, 35, no. Precinct 4, Election Day 180, yes, 45, no. Absentee 149, yes, 40, no. Precinct 5, Election Day 137, yes, 45, no. Absentee 85, yes, 31, no. Precinct 6, Election Day 251, yes, 63, no. Absentee 80, yes, 27, no. Precinct 7, Election Day 273, yes, 59, no. Absentee 84, yes, 20, no. Precinct 8, Election Day 263, yes, 81, no. Absentee 120, yes, 28, no. Precinct 9, Election Day 380, yes, 89, no. Absentee 201, yes, 44, no. Precinct 10, um, Election Day 142, yes, 39, no. Absentee 92, yes, 20, no. Precinct 11, Election Day 57, yes, 8, no. Absentee 96, yes, 27, no. Precinct 12, Election Day 51, yes, 12, no. Um, for a total- Oh, I didn't do abst- 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 901, no's, 1,318 undervotes and 0 overvotes. Constitutional Amendment Number 1. Precinct 1, Election Day 220, yes, 50, no. Absentee 159, yes, 31, no. Precinct 2, Election Day 168, yes, 45, no. Absentee 142, yes, 37, no. Precinct 3, Election Day 150, yes, 44, no. Absentee 205, yes, 40, no. Precinct 4, Election Day 202, yes, 56, no. Absentee 203, yes, 34, no. Precinct 5, Election Day 181, yes, 41, no. Absentee 112, yes, 22, no. Precinct 6, Election Day 308, yes, 62, no. Absentee 99, yes, 30, no. Precinct 7, Election Day 321, yes, 58, no. Absentee 104, yes, 27, no. Precinct 8, Election Day 323, yes, 76, no. Absentee 123, yes, 54, no. Precinct 9, Election Day 408, yes, 113, no. Absentee 232, yes, 63, no. Precinct 10, Election Day 174, yes, 32, no. Absentee 108, yes, 25, no. Precinct 11, Election Day 65, yes, 16, no. Absentee 108, yes, 30, no. Precinct 12, Election Day 56, yes, 19, no's. Absentee 65, no, 16. For a total of 4,236, yes. 1,021, no's. 538 undervotes and 1 overvote. Constitutional Amendment 2. Precinct 1, Election Day 245, yes, 24, no. Absentee 155, yes, 37, no. Precinct 2, Election Day 180, yes, 31, no. Absentee 149, yes, 30, no. Precinct 3, Election Day 160, yes, 30, no. Absentee 217, yes, 25, no. Precinct 4, Election Day 214, yes, 39, no's. Absentee 203, yes, 36, no. Precinct 5, Election Day 192, yes, 30, no. Absentee 116, yes, 19, no. Precinct 6, Election Day 323, yes, 44, no. Absentee 111, yes, 17, no. Precinct 7, Election Day 328, yes, 44, no. Absentee 106, yes, 24, no. Precinct 8, Election Day 347, yes, 53, no. Absentee 134, yes, 43, no. Precinct 9, Election Day 1455, yes, 62, no. Absentee 255, yes, 44, no. Precinct 10, Election Day 174, yes, 31, no. Absentee 112, 22- 112, yes, 22, no. Precinct 11, Election Day 67, yes, 13, no's. Absentee 119, yes, 19, no. Precinct 12, Election Day 70, yes, 6, no. Absentee 73, yes, 7, no. For a total of 4,505, yes. 730, no's. 561 undervotes and 0 overvotes. Did you read them?
Yeah, because I'm gonna play the tiles here.
It is- These ones are a little bit shorter now. Because they don't have all the precincts. So, County Board of Supervisors, District 2. Um, Jane Day Weary, Republican. Precinct 1, Election Day 252. Absentee 176. Precinct 4, Election Day 229, absentee 209. Precinct 12, Election Day 75. Um, absentee 80. For a total of 1,021 votes. Write-in, Precinct 1 had 7 on Election Day, 11 absentee. Precinct 4, 15, Election Day 6, absentee. Precinct 12, 2 write-ins, Election Day 1 absentee. For a total of 42. 138 undervotes, 0 overvotes. Um, County Board of Supervisors, District 4. Pam Marsen, Republican. Precinct 7, Election Day 278, absentee 89. Precinct 8, Election Day 311, absentee 138. For a total of 816. Keith A. Pittson, Precinct 7, Election Day 51, absentee 14. Precinct 8, Election Day 63, absentee 33. For a total of 161. Um, write-in for Precinct 7, Election Day was 13, absentee 4. Precinct 8, Election Day 9, absentee 9. For a total of 35. Mike Mayer, Precinct 7, 59, Election Day 28, absentee. Precinct 8, Election Day 22, absentee 12. For a total of 121. There's 55 undervotes and 0 overvotes. County Board of Supervisors, District 5. Mark Morley-Hendrickson, Republican. Precinct 9, Election Day 337, absentee 169. Precinct 10, Election Day 168, absentee 93. For a total of 767. Jerry Rosatard, Democratic Party. Precinct 9, Election Day 217, absentee 147. Precinct 10, Election Day 54, absentee 48. For a total of 466. 5 writings, Election Day Precinct 9, 1 write-in, absentee Precinct 9. Um, for a total of 6 write-ins. 48 undervotes, 2 overvotes. County Auditor, Rachel Costa, Republican. Precinct 1, Election Day 249, absentee 179. Precinct 2, Election Day 189, absentee 158. Precinct 3, Election Day 186, absentee 208. Precinct 4, Election Day 226, absentee 203. Precinct 5, Election Day 214, absentee 137. Precinct 6, Election Day 361, absentee 120. Precinct 7, Election Day 374, absentee 114. Precinct 8, Election Day 388, absentee 163. Precinct 9, Election Day 2- Or- Oh my gosh. Precinct 9, Election Day 528, absentee 281.[1607.66] Precinct ten, election day two oh four, absentee one twenty-three. Precinct eleven, election day seventy-nine, absentee one twenty-one. Precinct twelve, election day seventy-three, absentee seventy-six, for a total of four thousand nine hundred and fifty-four. Um, for write-ins, precinct one, one election day, two absentee. Precinct two, four election day, one absentee. Um, zero precinct three, precinct four, four write-ins on election day. Precinct five, six elections, or six write-ins on election day. Precinct six, two write-ins, election day. Precinct seven, three election day, two absentee. Precinct eight, three election day, absentee one. Precinct nine, six election day, absentee one. Precinct ten, one election day. Precinct eleven, one election day, three absentee. And zero at precinct twelve, for a total of forty-one. There are eight hundred and one undervotes and zero overvotes. County sheriff, um, Gregory Beaver, Republican. Precinct one, election day two fifty, absentee one eighty-six. Precinct two, election day two oh two, absentee one seventy-three. Precinct three, election day one seventy-five, absentee two eighteen. Precinct four, election day two forty-five, absentee two twenty-one. Precinct five, election day two twenty-five, absentee one thirty-four. Precinct six, election day three forty-two, absentee one twenty-one. Precinct seven, election day three seventy-eight, absentee one twenty-two. Precinct eight, election day three ninety-three, absentee one seventy-eight. Precinct nine, election day five twenty-seven, absentee two eighty-eight. Precinct ten, election day two oh nine, absentee one twenty-eight. Precinct eleven, election day eighty-three, absentee one thirty-three. Precinct twelve, election day seventy-seven, absentee seventy-eight, for a total of five thousand eighty-six votes. Write-in, uh, precinct one, election day two, absentee two. Precinct two, election day three, absentee one. Precinct three, election day one, absentee one. Precinct four, election day two. Um, precinct five, election day two, absentee one. Precinct six, election day seven, absentee two. Precinct seven, election day two, absentee one. Precinct eight, election day four, absentee one. Precinct nine, election day five, absentee one. Precinct ten, election day three. Precinct eleven, election day two. And none at precinct twelve, for a total of forty-three write-ins, six hundred and sixty-seven undervotes and zero overvotes. Borough township trustee, um, Ron Voss, Voss, that?
Voss.
Voss. Um, precinct five, election day forty-four, absentee forty-nine, for a total of ninety-three. There were zero write-ins, seven undervotes, zero overvotes. Um, Cedar Township trustee, Brad Johnson, precinct eight, election day fifteen, absentee five. Precinct ten, election day ninety-nine, absentee sixty-three. Precinct eleven, election day thirty-one, absentee forty-seven. Precinct twelve, election day twenty-six, absentee forty-one, for a total of three hundred and twenty-seven. Um, votes, zero write-ins, seventy-seven undervotes, zero overvotes. Douglas Township trustee, Roger Schroeder, precinct five, election day ninety-seven, absentee thirty-seven, for a total of one thirty-four. Zero write-ins, nineteen undervotes, zero overvotes. Um, East Lincoln Township trustee, precinct Richard Wright, Richard, oh my God. Precinct five, election day thirty-four, absentee fourteen, for a total of forty-eight. Zero write-ins, seven undervotes, zero overvotes. Jenkins Township trustee, Lee Newton, precinct six, election day eighty-four, absentee thirty-three, for a total of one seventeen. Zero write-ins, sixteen undervotes, zero overvotes. Um, Liberty Township trustee, Richard J. Havlovick, precinct six, election day thirty-eight, absentee twenty-nine. Precinct seven, election day twenty-eight, absentee nine. Um, for a total of a hundred and four votes, zero write-ins, ten undervotes, zero overvotes. Mitchell Township trustee, Kevin Coster, precinct nine, election day thirteen, absentee eleven. Precinct ten, election day fifty-four, absentee thirty-three, for a total of one hundred and eleven. Zero write-ins, fifteen undervotes, zero overvotes. Um, Newburgh Township trustee, Donnie Thorson, precinct eight, election day one oh six, absentee forty-nine, for a total of one fifty-five. Zero write-ins, six undervotes, zero overvotes. Um, he's our big winner. Um, Osage Township trustee, there was after, there was two people wrote in. There was one for Dean Betts, absentee precinct eleven, and one for Robert J. Unken in precinct twelve, absentee. So it's a tie, so we have to draw.
They were both wrote in, so it was a tie.
Yeah, okay, so there was two votes. And there were two hundred and five undervotes and zero overvotes.
And that means none of those.
No one voted on the race, yeah.
So just the question of townships, do they come into Osage? That's what I'm thinking.
Correct, but because it's a tie, we have to draw for the winner. And so if you don't live in that jurisdiction, then you guys would have to appoint someone for that.
Wait, wait.
All right. And it was Dean Betts. So I do have to, when I go upstairs, I have to correct, because there was no winner announced on the Osage Township. So I'll have to print one of those. I'm just gonna say.
And then we sign up, well.
Um, I'll bring it back down. I have time, time for Brown.
Okay, correct.
All right, and then we have Otrino Township trustee, Kurt Meyer, precinct eight, election day one twenty-three, absentee forty-four, for a total of one sixty-seven. Eight write-ins, um, on election day nineteen, or twenty-two undervotes, zero overvotes. Rock Township trustee, Craig Tesh, election day ninety-six, absentee sixty-six, for a total of one sixty-two. Zero write-ins, twenty-one undervotes, zero overvotes. Rock Township clerk to fill a vacancy, Gail Heimer, precinct eight, election day ninety-three, absentee sixty-nine, for a total of one sixty-two. Zero write-ins, twenty-one undervotes, zero overvotes. Um. But there's gotta be one out of the way, this is. Well, I'll find it. Um, City Ask for Township trustee, Kevin Coster, precinct nine, election day one twenty-two, absentee fifty, uh, for a total of one seventy-two. Two write-ins on election day eighteen, or nineteen undervotes, zero overvotes. Staceyville Township trustee, Norbert Heeman, precinct seven, election day ninety-two, absentee thirty-one, for a total of one twenty-three. Zero write-ins, fifteen undervotes, zero overvotes. Union Township trustee, Christopher Patterson, precinct seven, election day eighty-six, absentee twenty-nine, for a total of one fifteen. Zero write-ins, thirteen undervotes, zero overvotes. Wayne Township trustee, uh, pre- these were all write-ins too. So the write-ins, there was four election day, one absentee, for a total of five. Philip Jensen, seven on election day, for a total of seven. There's fifty undervotes and zero overvotes. Um, West Lincoln Township trustee, Daniel J. Lewis, precinct five, election day twenty-seven, absentee thirty-three. Precinct twelve, election day nine, absentee fourteen, for a total of eighty-three. Zero write-ins, eleven undervotes, zero overvotes. Any last names?
No, not the last, some of them were before Phil, somebody. Um, do you call him and for a write-in, do they have to, I mean, what kind of, he, get write-in?
So if they win and they don't want it, they can say no, and then you guys would have to. Um, are you talking about that Wayne Township one, like Philip Jensen?
Yeah.
So he's on the, on there right now. Um, he didn't turn in paperwork, which is why he wasn't on the ballot. So people wrote him and, and I believe he wants to do it, so that's good. All right, county public hospital trustees. Um, first one is Luke Porish, precinct one, election day one fifty-eight, absentee one forty. Precinct two, election day one twenty-eight, absentee one eighteen. Precinct three, election day one twenty-one, absentee one fifty-seven. Precinct four, election day one sixty, absentee one fifty-six. Precincts five, election day one thirty-nine, absentee ninety-seven. Precinct six, election day two twenty-three, absentee seventy-six. Precinct seven, election day three oh eight, absentee ninety-seven. Precinct eight, election day three eighteen, absentee one fifty-three. Precinct nine, election day four fifty-four, absentee two thirty-seven. Precinct ten, election day one twenty-four, absentee eighty-three. Precinct eleven, election day fifty-nine, absentee ninety-four. Precinct twelve, election day fifty-three, absentee forty-nine, for a total of three thousand seven hundred and two votes. Steve Norby, precinct one, two eleven, election day, absentee one sixty-two. Precinct two, election day one fifty-nine, absentee one fifty-four. Precinct three, election day one fifty-one, absentee one ninety-four. Precinct four, election day two oh eight, absentee one eighty-seven. Precinct five, election day one seventy-six, absentee one oh three. Precinct six, election day two fifty-six, absentee eighty-six. Precinct seven, election day three nineteen, absentee one oh one. Precinct eight, election day three eighteen, absentee one fifty-eight. Precinct nine, election day four twenty-five, absentee two twenty-one. Elec- or precinct ten, election day one seventy-nine, absentee one twelve. Precinct eleven, election day seventy-three, absentee one fifteen. Precinct twelve, election day sixty, absentee sixty-three, for a total of four thousand one hundred and ninety-one votes. Cheryl J. Smalley, precinct one, election day one eighty-four, absentee one forty-eight. Precinct two, election day one forty-three, absentee one twenty-seven. Precinct three, election day one thirty-one, absentee one sixty-eight. Precinct four, election day one seventy-nine, absentee one eighty. Precinct five, election day one fifty-four, absentee one oh six. Precinct six, election day two eighty-three, absentee one oh five. Precinct seven, election day two eighty-two, absentee ninety-five. Precinct eight, election day two eighty-eight, absentee one forty-three. Precinct nine, election day four oh three, absentee four, two oh eight. Um, precinct ten, af- election day one thirty-six, absentee eighty-eight. Precinct eleven, election day sixty-two, absentee one oh nine. Precinct twelve, election day fifty-one, absentee fifty-six, for a total of three thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine. Um, write-ins, we have precinct one, absentee three. Precinct two, election day six. Precinct three, three absentee. Precinct four, one election day, two absentee. Precinct five, one election day, five absentee. Precinct six, four election day, one absentee. Precinct seven, two, election day, one absentee. Precinct eight, three election day, one absentee. Precinct nine, five election day, two absentee. Precinct ten, one election day, none at precinct eleven, and one election day in precinct twelve, for a total of forty-two. Five thousand six hundred and twenty-one undervotes and three overvotes. All right, we have soil and water conservation district commissioner, Eric Jellum, precinct one, election day one eighty-seven, absentee one sixty. Precinct two, election day one forty-seven, absentee one thirty-one. Precinct three, election day one forty-four, absentee one seventy. Precinct four, election day one eighty-one, absentee one seventy-five. Precinct five, election day one forty-five, absentee one thirteen. Precinct six, election day two sixty, absentee eighty-six. Precinct seven, election day three oh two, absentee ninety. Precinct eight, election day three fourteen, absentee one fifty-four. Precinct nine, election day four thirty-five, absentee two twenty-three. Precinct ten, election day one fifty-nine, absentee one seventeen. Precinct eleven, election day sixty-two, absentee one fourteen. Precinct twelve, election day fifty-nine, absentee sixty-two, for a total of three thousand nine hundred and ninety votes. Sue Sletton, precinct one, one ninety-five, election day one fifty-six, absentee. Precinct two, one fifty-eight, election day one thirty-two, absentee. Precinct three, election day one thirty-eight, absentee one eighty-five. Precinct four, election day one ninety-six, absentee one eighty-seven. Precinct five, election day one seventy-seven, absentee one sixteen. Precinct six, election day two fifty, absentee ninety-five. Precinct seven, election day three hundred, absentee ninety-seven. Precinct eight, election day three oh two, absentee one forty-six. Precinct nine, election day four oh three, absentee two oh six. Precinct ten, election day one fifty-two, absentee ninety-two. Precinct eleven, election day seventy-six, absentee, absentee one twenty-four. Precinct twelve, election day fifty-six, absentee sixty-two, for a total of four thousand one votes. Um, write-ins, precinct one, three, absentee five. Precinct two, six, absentee four. Precinct three, six absentee. Precinct four, three, election day three absentee. Precinct five, two election day. Precinct six, seven election day, two absentee. Precinct seven, three, election day two absentee. Precinct eight, nine election day, nine absentee. Precinct nine, nine election day, three absentee. Um, precinct ten, two election day, five absentee. None precinct eleven, and two election day at precinct twelve, for a total of eighty-five. And they had a vote for three. There's a lot of write-ins, so, uh, precinct eight, absentee Randy Johnson got three votes. And precinct nine, election day, he got one, for a total of four. There was nine thousand three hundred and eight undervotes and zero overvotes.
Did you vote Randy Johnson?
Yep. So I'll find a contact for him if anything does happen.
I have his phone number.
What?
I have his phone number.
Perfect, I need that. Good call. Um, last one, county agriculture extension council, Angela Sprung, precinct one, election day one seventy-two, absentee one forty-five. Precinct two, election day one thirty-three, absentee one seventeen. Precinct three, election day one twenty-seven, absentee one sixty-one. Precinct four, election day one seventy-four, absentee one sixty-seven. Precinct five, election day one fifty-four, absentee one fourteen. Precinct six, election day two seventy-four, absentee one oh one. Precinct seven, election day three oh nine, absentee ninety-nine. Precinct eight, election day two ninety-six, absentee one forty-three. Precinct nine, election day three ninety-eight, absentee two eleven. Precinct ten, election day one fifty, absentee ninety-nine. Precinct eleven, election day sixty-two, absentee one ten. Precinct twelve, election day fifty-seven, absentee fifty-six, for a total of three thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine votes. Haley Davis, precinct one, election day one fifty-six, absentee one twenty-four. Precinct two, election day one twenty-six, absentee one oh nine. Precinct three, election day one twelve, absentee one forty-six. Precinct four, election day one fifty-nine, absentee one sixty-one. Precinct five, election day one forty-four, absentee ninety-three. Precinct six, election day two seventeen, absentee seventy-seven. Precinct seven, election day two sixty-five, absentee eighty-four. Precinct eight, election day two sixty-nine, absentee one thirty-five. Precinct nine, election day three seventy-one, absentee one ninety-nine. Precinct ten, election day one fifteen, eighty-one absentee. Precinct eleven, election day fifty-four, absentee ninety-seven. Precinct twelve, election day forty-six, absentee fifty-three, for a total of three thousand three hundred and ninety-three votes. Joseph Class, precinct one, election day one ninety-one, absentee one forty-nine. Precinct two, election day one thirty-seven, absentee one twenty-six. Precinct three, election day one forty-three, absentee one sixty-eight. Precinct four, election day one eighty-one, absentee one seventy-eight. Precinct five, election day one eighty-four, absentee one eleven. Precinct six, election day two fifty-nine, absentee eighty-five. Precinct seven, two eighty-five, absentee eighty-seven. Precinct eight, election day two eighty-five, absentee one thirty-nine. Precinct nine, election day three eighty, absentee two oh three. Precinct ten, election day one forty-six, absentee one hundred. Precinct eleven, election day seventy-two, absentee one eighteen. Precinct twelve, election day fifty-seven, absentee sixty, for a total of three thousand eight hundred and forty-four votes. Um, next one, Jill M. Pop, precinct one, election day two oh nine, absentee one fifty-seven. Precinct two, election day one sixty-one, absentee one forty-one. Precinct three, election day one forty-six, absentee one eighty-two. Precinct four, election day one ninety-four, absentee one eighty-seven. Precinct five, election day one seventy, absentee one fourteen. Um, precinct six, election day two forty-eight, absentee ninety-three. Precinct seven, election day three oh four, absentee ninety-nine. Precinct eight, election day three thirty, absentee one fifty-four. Precinct nine, election day four thirty-two, absentee two twenty-eight. Precinct ten, af- election day one sixty-seven, absentee one oh seven. Precinct eleven, election day seventy-five, one twenty-four absentee. Precinct twelve, election day fifty-six, absentee sixty-eight, for a total of four thousand one hundred and forty-six votes. Um, write-ins, precinct one, absentee one. Precinct two, election day four. Precinct three, one absentee. Precinct four, one absentee. Precinct five, one absentee. Precinct six, five election day. Precinct seven, two, election day two absentee. Precinct eight, two, um, I don't know, two election day. Um, precinct nine, election day three, write-in, uh, election day. Precinct ten, one, election day one absentee. None for precinct eleven and twelve, for a total of twenty-four. There were seven thousand nine hundred and forty undervotes and eight overvotes. That concludes this. You wanna go on a recess till ten thirty? Okay.
We'll recess till ten thirty. Thank you.
Forest City, so other than, you know, semis who are in a hurry and passing like two people at a time. I'm dying when you can't see what's coming.
Yeah.
These little sports cars that are passing people. I'm like, no, no.
All right, we're back on line. It's 10:30. The Elder Bridge Annual Report and Possible Action.
Yeah, so thank you for holding off your meeting and meeting back up so that I could make the trip over from Forest City to be here. So Jody Applegate, I'm the Health Aging Director at Elder Bridge. And so I gave you copies of our annual report, July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024. Would like to thank you for your giving in FY '24, FY '25, this current year. So here today with the ask for FY '26. It's kind of hard to believe that we're looking at '26 already. But in the annual report, it has all of the same information last year, where our funding comes from, all of the services we have, just a broad overview. And then the piece of paper that was inside there is specifically for Mitchell County. So the bulk of our services are congregate and home-delivered meals, of which I oversee. And we still continue with Osage and St. Ansgar as meal sites in these two counties. Other services that Elder Bridge does, we contract out for Mitchell County Home Health, for homemaker services, legal aid, and then personal care also through Mitchell County Home Health. And then services that are directly provided by Elder Bridge, caregiver, information INA. We have people that just answer the phones and help direct people to where they need to get to get further information. Homemaker, elder abuse prevention, nutrition education, and options counseling. Iowa Return to Community and Options Counseling. And so then on the back, just based on FY '24 data and your county population, we are asking $3.20 per senior in your county for FY '26.
Yeah, see the previous years, we had the 93, 93 as we got there. And then last year, I worked on the 9154. You must have reduced it last year, but then.
I think the population data might have been down a little bit last year, and then it feels like it's back up or something maybe. We are asking, it's a nickel more. It's 3.20 now versus 3.50, I think, last year.
Do you have a motion to approve the $9,008? $9,008?
There's a question. Have we been approving these, or are we waiting for budget? Are we just receiving them as a request and then wait for budget time? I don't, remind me what we've been doing. I can't remember if we've done the other ones, or if we just listened to the request.
I think we've been listening to the request, waiting for budget time, haven't we?
This is the first one of the year.
This is the first one?
Yeah.
Okay.
What in the past?
Yeah, I think we were talking about that last year, that we would take the requests and then we would do our budget and then we had let it. Everybody now, rather, personally, I'd rather compile all the numbers and see where we're at with our budget.
I agree.
Listen to your request, by all means.
Yeah, no, I agree. I take that money that they give me and tell me I'm allotted for my 29 counties and 60 some meal sites and ask them what they think they need and then have to kind of tell them that I can't give them everything. So I completely get it.
We start budget process at the beginning of January, and we just will crunch everything, see where we're at with everything.
Yeah, no, I just appreciate you guys letting us be here to put that ask for because that helps us with, you know, our budgeting too. And also, you know, we continue with fundraisers. We've got the March Madness fundraiser online that we'll do again in March. Last year, we raised about $27,000 with just an online auction, along with going out to businesses and asking them for donations. And we also have a full-time grant writer who last year got us $88,000 towards our meal budget. And this year, we're continuing with that. We've gotten some grants that have allowed us to be able to get all of our home-delivered residents' emergency meals. So they'll all get a box that has five meals in it. So if the meal site can't serve a meal, then they'll have something that's shelf-stable that can. It may not be the greatest if they don't have electricity, but they'll be able to open up the packet and have something to eat. So we've been able to do that with grants, so.
Very good.
Yeah, so no, I just appreciate you letting us.
Speaking for myself, it's a very good program.
Thank you.
Do our best to accommodate.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I drew a proud.
Thanks. I've only been there for three years, but this is where I plan to be for the rest of my duration. All right.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. You guys have a great day. I was just here to support. I'm on the Elder Bridge tour.
Oh, no, that's okay. No, no, just thank you guys for even thinking about helping us.
And we have an advisory council, and so we have someone from every county. And this is the first time, I believe, in Elder Bridge history that we've actually had an advisory council member for every county. So that is great that we have support from our counties, the people that are out there. I don't live in, you know, Mitchell County. I live in Saragordo, so I can only go out and visit and see a little snapshot. But it's nice to have people who actually live in the counties that can come back to us and tell us more of their needs too. Yeah, if you guys have any elderly problems, like have problems, please reach out to me because I'm willing to go and talk and help and whatever I can do.
And for the benefit of the hour, state your name, please.
Oh, sorry. I'm Deb Sharper, and I, yeah, live in Mitchell County and Osage, so sorry about that.
That way the public don't hear that.
I forget we're on TV. So yes, all right. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Nothing else. We'll adjourn at 10:34.